Call the December 9, 2020 Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting to order. Would you please join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Walker. Commissioner Kelly. Commissioner Neal. Commissioner Abbott.
Here.
Chairman Morris.
Here.
Commissioner Jacks.
Here.
Commissioner Martin.
Here.
Commissioner Alexander.
Here.
Commissioner Gillette.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. The automated announcement, please.
Anyone who has not signed in, please do so at the table located in the lobby. If anyone wished to speak, please complete a request to speak form, which is also located on the lobby table next to the sign machine. A request to speak form must be completed for each item you would like to speak on. Please note, there are stairs on the right, left, and center aisles, and we ask that you use caution when using the stairs. There is also a ramp located to the audience's left. If anyone has written comments, exhibits, petitions, photos, or letters they intend to present at today's meeting, have seventeen copies and give them to a staff member at the back of the auditorium. Staff member, please hold up your hand for the audience. If you do not have seventeen copies, you may use the overhead camera to present your documents. Please place your documents on the podium and line it up with the arrows indicated. If you want your documentation to go on record, you must hand them to the clerk after your presentation with the agenda item number clearly marked on the documentation. Members of the public cannot speak to staff members that are seated at the tables with microphones during the meeting. If you have questions, please see the staff member located in the back of the auditorium. All speakers will be limited to two minutes to make their presentation statements. Everyone, please turn off all cell phones or place them on vibrate during the meeting. If you must take a call, please leave the meeting area and go outside to have your conversation. We also ask the audience to refrain from talking with one another during the presentations and discussions. Today, the Planning and Zoning Commission will hear public testimony and then forward a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. Everyone attending the meeting is asked to remember that the administrative building and campus are tobacco-free areas, which means no smoking is allowed from curb to curb. No food or drinks are allowed in the auditorium except for bottled water. If there are any items remaining on the agenda, the Commission will break for lunch for one hour per the chairman's discretion.
The items with the recommendation made by the Commission will be heard by the Board of Supervisors on Monday, January 4, 2021, at 9:30 a.m. in this same location, with the exception of any continued items. Moving on to item five, need a motion to approve the minute meetings from November 12, 2020.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Gillette, and I have a second by Commissioner Neal. Those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Item one was withdrawn by the applicant, so that moves us on to item two A.
Mr. Chairman, just a real quick, and Commission would like to kind of explain what we're trying to do today. We do have, we've been working with IT, and we're going to try out a Skype technology. We have, one of our planners is in the conference room in the back on Skype, Hunter Kelly, and he'll be reading his items in through the Skype system. We also have one of our planning technicians on Skype from home. Just trying to make sure that the Skype technology works for this meeting. If in the future we have a commissioner that is more remote or not able to make it to the meeting, we can probably use this, this technology. It might be a little bit better than phone, phoning into the meeting. So if there are issues with him reading into the items from Skype, then we'll just pull him out and have him come do it as we regularly do. But for right now, we're going to try it on his items, and it's just a few items that he has.
Thank you. And moves us on then to item two A.
All right, item two A is an evaluation of a request for an amendment to the Mojave County General Plan and an amendment to the Golden Valley area plan from an HR high-density residential land use designation to a GC general commercial land use designation for Assessor's parcel number 30629006C in the Golden Valley vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
The applicant is available for questions by phone if the Commission has any. Do we have anyone wishing to speak on item two A? Hearing none. Does any commissioner have a question or comments at this time on item two A? Calling for a motion on two A.
Second a motion.
Have a motion by Commissioner Walker, a second by Commissioner Abbott. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item two B.
Item two B is an evaluation of a request for a rezone to Assessor's parcel number 30629006C from an AR 2A agricultural residential 10-acre minimum lot size zone to a C2H commercial highway design to allow for a medical plant nursery and faster restaurants in the Golden Valley vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Applicant is available for questions by phone if the Commission has any. Do we have anyone wishing to speak on item two B? Does any commissioner have any questions or comments at this time on item two B? Calling for a motion on item two B.
I'll make a motion to approve per staff recommendation.
Got a motion by Commissioner Abbott, a second by Commissioner Gillette. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
A motion carries. Item three.
Item number three is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor's parcel number 30613143 from an AR 2A agricultural residential 2-acre minimum lot size zone to an AR agricultural residential zone to allow for a minor land division in the Golden Valley vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Is the applicant present? Do you wish to speak on the item? Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on item three? Does any commissioner have questions or comments at this time on item three? Looking for a motion on item three?
I will make a motion per the staff for item three.
Got a motion by Commissioner Neal, and a second was Commissioner Walker. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item four.
Item number four is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor's parcel number 31749105 from a C2 10A general commercial 10-acre minimum lot size zone to a C2 8A general commercial 8-acre minimum lot size zone and C2 3A general commercial 3-acre minimum lot size zone to allow for a minor land division in the White Hills vicinity. The applicant is seeking to create two parcels with this minor land division. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
The applicant is here, wish to speak on the item? Okay. Do we have anyone else wishing to speak on item four? Does any commissioner have questions or comments at this time on item four? Looking for a motion on item four.
I'll make a motion to approve item four per staff recommendation.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Abbott, got a second by Commissioner Gillette. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item five A.
Item number five A is an evaluation of a request for an amendment to the Mojave County General Plan from an RDA rural development area land use designation to a GC general commercial land use designation for Assessor's parcel number 30831016 in the Santa Claus Acres vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
The applicant is present, wish to speak on this item?
Not at this time.
Anyone wishing to speak on item five A? Does any commissioner have questions or comments at this time on item five A? Looking for a motion for item five A.
I make a motion that we approve with standard conditions.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Gillette, and a second by Commissioner Walker. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item five B.
Item number five B is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor's parcel number 30831016 from an RE 1A residential recreation 1-acre minimum lot size zone to a C2H highway commercial zone to allow for a retail building in the Santa Claus Acres vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
The applicant is present, wish to speak on this item? Do we have any speakers for item five B? Do we have any comments or questions by our commissioners? Looking for a motion on item five B.
I will make a motion to approve with staff recommendations.
Motion by Commissioner Walker, looking for a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gillette. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item six.
Item number six is an evaluation of a request for an extension of time on special use purpose on Assessor's parcel number 31757024 to allow for a billboard in a C2H highway commercial zone in the White Hills vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
The applicant is here, wish to speak on the item? Anyone else wishing to speak on item six? Does any commissioner have questions or comments on item six? Okay, Chair is now looking for a motion for item six.
I will make a motion for item six per staff recommendations.
Got a motion by Commissioner Neal.
Second.
And second Commissioner Gillette. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item seven A.
Item number seven A is an evaluation of a request to rescind and cause the property to revert from a UDA HI urban development area heavy industrial land use designation and a UDA LI urban development area light industrial land use designation to the previous UDA urban development area with CR commercial recreation, LR low-density residential, MR medium-density residential, and PF public facilities land use designations, having not met the conditions of approval as specified in Board of Supervisors Resolution 2009-289, which approved the major amendment to the Mojave County General Plan. Resolution 2009-289 was conditionally approved at the November 16, 2009 Board of Supervisors meeting. Staff recommends that this resolution, number 2009-289, be rescinded, and the property will revert to a UDA urban development area with CR commercial recreation, LR low-density residential, MR medium-density residential, and PF public facilities land use designation.
Is the applicant present?
County?
No. Anyone wishing to speak on item seven A? Does any commissioner have questions or comments this time for item seven A?
Yeah, this item, Chairman?
Commissioner Walker.
The county is the applicant, just reversing it.
Chairman, Commissioner Walker, yes, that is correct. The county is the applicant on.
And owners have been notified?
Yes, via certified mail.
Okay. No response?
We receive, I received one phone call just by one of the property owners that received a letter, just asking for clarification on what was happening, but other than that, I've received no response.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, looking for a motion on item seven A.
I'll make a motion to approve per staff recommendations.
Second a motion.
Got a motion by Commissioner Walker, second by Commissioner Abbott. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item seven B.
Item number seven B is an evaluation of a request to rescind and cause the property to revert from heavy industrial and light industrial land use designations to the previous low-density residential, medium-density residential, commercial recreation, golf course, and water treatment plant land use designations, and remove section 20 and the south half of the south half and the north half of section 17, Township 20 North, Range 13 West, excluding that portion of Silverado acre estates, tract 3805, north of McGarry's Wash, from the Silverado area plan boundary, having not met the conditions of approval as specified in Board of Supervisors Resolution 2009-290, which approved the amendment and boundary adjustment to the Silverado area plan. This resolution was conditionally approved at the November 16, 2009 Board of Supervisors meeting. As of this date, the conditions of approval have not been met. Staff recommends that Board of Supervisor Resolution, number 2009-290, be rescinded.
Is the applicant present? No. Anyone wishing to speak on item seven B? Does any commissioner have questions or comments at this time, seven B? Calling for a motion on item seven B.
I'll make a motion to rescind per staff recommendation.
Got a motion by Commissioner Abbott, I got a second by Commissioner Gillette. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item seven C.
Item seven C is an evaluation of a request to rescind and cause the property to revert back to Silverado acre estates, unit 1, tract 3805, as requested by Mojave County, having not met the conditions of approval as specified in Board of Supervisors Resolution 2009-291, which approved the reversion to acreage. This resolution was conditionally approved at the November 16, 2009 Board of Supervisors meeting. As of this date, the conditions of approval have not been met. Staff recommends that Board of Supervisor's Resolution, number 2009-291, be rescinded.
Is the applicant present? Do we have anyone wishing to speak on item seven C? Does any commissioner have questions or comments on item seven C?
I have a question for staff. Why all the statements, does this stuff just pop up? Is board debt board?
Chairman, Commissioner Neal, we received a note, I believe, from one of the, it was a lien holder, someone with an interest in possibly foreclosing on some of these properties, and brought it to our attention that none of these conditions had been met, so.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, looking for a motion on item seven C.
I make a motion that the board approve with the condition from the staff.
I got a motion by Commissioner Gillette, and a second by who?
Neal.
Commissioner Neal, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven D.
Item number seven D is an evaluation of a request to rescind and cause the property to revert from an MX heavy manufacturing zone to the previous AR 36A agricultural residential 36-acre minimum lot size zone, AR 10A agricultural residential 10-acre minimum lot size zone, and ROA single-family residential manufactured homes prohibited with limited animal privileges zone, as requested by Mojave County, having not met the conditions of approval as specified in Board of Supervisors Resolution 2009-292, which approved the rezone. This resolution was conditionally approved at the November 16, 2009 Board of Supervisors meeting. As of this date, the conditions of approval have not been met. Staff recommends that Board of Supervisor's Resolution, number 2009-292, be rescinded.
Is the applicant present? Anyone wishing to speak on item seven D? Does any commissioner have questions or comments on seven D? Okay, looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve item seven D with staff recommendations.
Got a motion by Commissioner Walker, a second?
Second a motion.
Second by Commissioner Abbott. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item, sorry.
Item seven E.
Item number seven E is an evaluation of a request to rescind Board of Supervisors Resolution 2009-293, having not met the conditions of approval set forth to abandon all public roadway ingress and egress easements or rights of way, public utility and drainage easements, and Old Highway 93 in the Mojave County general area. This resolution was conditionally approved at the November 16, 2009 Board of Supervisors meeting. As of this date, the conditions of approval have not been met. Staff recommends that Board of Supervisor's Resolution, number 2009-293, be rescinded.
Is the applicant present? Anyone wishing to speak on item seven E? Does any commissioner have questions or comments at this time, seven E? Okay, looking for a motion on item seven E.
I'll make a motion to rescind per staff recommendation.
Got a motion by Commissioner Abbott.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gillette. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item eight.
Item number eight is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor's parcel number 206-27-041G from an AR 36A agricultural residential 36-acre minimum lot size zone to an AR 31A agricultural residential 31-acre minimum lot size zone to bring the property into compliance in the Kingman vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Is the applicant present? Anyone wishing to speak on item eight? Does any commissioner have any questions or comments at this time on item eight? Okay, looking for a motion for item eight.
I make a motion that the board approve with the conditions from the staff.
Got a motion by Commissioner Gillette, looking for a second? Got a second by Commissioner Walker. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item nine, adoption of the 2021 Planning and Zoning Commissioner, Commission, I'm sorry, calendar. Looking for a motion to approve the 2021 Planning and Zoning Commission calendar.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2021 calendar.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Abbott, got a second by Commissioner Gillette. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. That brings us to item 10, monthly reports. We all receive those by email. Any questions or anything on monthly reports? Okay. No comments. Moving on to item 11, Commissioner comments. Limited to announcements, availability, and attendance at conferences and seminars. Requests for agenda items for future meetings, and requests for reports from the staff. Any comments?
I have one.
Mr.?
This is my last meeting. I'd like to wish you all well and thank Supervisor Watson for appointing me to this seat for two terms, and that's it.
I have to say that you've done an outstanding job.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Really sorry to see you go, but understanding you can only do so much with your time now on the City Council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Chairman Jacks?
Yeah, this is Larry. I just want to really apologize for not, but answer for the opponent, you know, and I'm really, everybody there, look forward to it. Forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Morris. All right, any other comments?
Chairman Jacks?
Yes.
If I may as well, I'd just like to thank Commissioner Walker for all of his time that he has put in on this commission. As you all are well aware, it's a, it's a lot of work and not always a job you get a lot of thanks for, so really appreciate Commissioner Walker and all of the time that he's put into both this commission and also, I'm not letting him get out of the Building Code Advisory Board, but he has, he has done a lot of service for the county and just really want to express that gratitude. and just really want to express that gratitude too.
Thank you.
Yeah, we will definitely miss your expertise, that's for sure. I know, being, uh, new to the board, what, about two years ago now, I guess, um, I really kind of sat in amazement with the knowledge that you had about, and I was thinking, my goodness, how am I ever going to learn any of this? But we're going to miss you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number 12 is a call to the public. We have anybody wishing to speak, call to the public. Hearing none, uh, request a motion for adjournment.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Walker makes a motion for adjournment.
And I second that.
And Commissioner Gillette seconds it, and so we are adjourned.